Good evening. I think we're about four minutes out. All right. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular city council meeting in the city of Lakewood, Colorado at 7:00 PM on October 24th, 2022. Again, like to welcome those who are tuning in this evening. If you're dialing in, that number's going to be 720-707-2699. And your webinar ID, whether you're calling in or joining via Zoom, is going to be 870-1796-0123. And go ahead and press pound twice. So with that, I'd like to ask the clerk to please call roll.
Paul.
Here.
Abel.
Here.
Franks.
Here.
Jansen.
Here.
Maya Guerrero.
Here.
Vincent.
Here.
Strom.
Here.
Charzai.
Here.
Springsteen.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Oliver. Counselor over.
Do not see him. He's not in attendees either.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Great. Thank you. So with that, if you'd please rise and join me in the presence of allegiance, and we'll have a moment of silent prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you very much. So I'll just read our statement of conflict. All members of the city council have the responsibility to comply with the terms of Charter 7.2B and excuse themselves from voting on any matter in which they determine they have a personal, financial, or business interest. The city council is empowered by Charter 7.2B to agree by unanimous vote excluding the member at issue to excuse any of any member of the council from voting on a matter which they determine such member has a personal, financial, or business interest. Moving right along, we'll go into general public comment. This is the point in the meeting where the public is invited to address the city council on items that are not included on the agenda. All comments should be directed to the city council. I ask that you observe all persons observe the same decorum as city council chambers. There is a three-minute time limit. When that three minutes, when you're at two and a half minutes, you'll hear a ding. And when your time is up, I'll ask you to politely wrap it up. When you are called on, please give us your name and address or name and ward.
Mayor, pardon me, but Councilman Over is on the attendees list.
Okay. Can you ask what he's under? Because I do not.
I see him under Rich O L V E R. Somebody just moved him. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right. I will also note that we had one comment on Lakewood Speaks in regards to short-term rentals. All right, Mr. Clerk, if you want to call the first name with their hand up.
Caller DMG.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Salazar. All right, Ms. Gonzalez, you're up. I'll start your three minutes. Ms. Gonzalez, Ward Four.
Ward Four, Desiree Gonzalez. I was just wondering if you were compulsive liars or if you have actual control over it. I emailed the city at 4:00 AM this morning because Lakewood Speaks wouldn't allow me to log in and register, therefore hindering my civil rights. You called me during an eight-hour surgery today on my landline and said that my emails bounced back. That's not true, because I just paid for two terabytes of extra storage on the 16th. So I would like to see your proof for one, because that's literally impossible unless you don't know how to copy and paste, which again, wouldn't get the proof that you don't know how to spell Gonzalez with a Z. Be following up on that. Then I wanted to circle back to when the mayor says he didn't answer to a city councillor. Well, that's just simply not true. You all answer to us, the people. All of you answer to us. Every single one of you sitting in that room, sitting at your home, all of you. You're supposed to be representing the people, not advocating for developers, not colonizing the animal kingdom, for Red Rocks Ranch, your new country club, and your wannabe lake. This is how bad of a job you guys are all doing. Sorry, pronoun there. Oh, wait, we don't have trans people, so it doesn't matter. This is how bad of a job you're doing. The left, the extreme left, and the right, the extreme right, hate each other. I think you should know that by now since we're a revolution and all. But something unprecedented is happening because you are so terrible at your jobs. We're all talking. We're trading info. We're trading license plates numbers with people who stalked us. We have everything, and we're coming. So just remember who you work for, because you don't work for yourselves, your bank accounts, the developers. You work for the people of Lakewood, not the buildings.
Okay. Anybody else wish to speak under public comment? Okay, I'll close. General public comment. I will also just reference, I know the gentleman that wrote in about STRs is in the audience and certainly understand your frustration. The city council is undertaking potential regulations, either to approve regulations which would bring some framework and potentially some relief, or just outright ban them if that doesn't pass. So I'd encourage you to continue to engage. And I think you can find that on Lakewood Speaks. Is that accurate, Mayor Pro Tem Vincent? Do we have the STR information? So LakewoodSpeaks.org. And certainly you can reach out to us individually. We can get you pointed in that direction. All right. Next up is the consent agenda. I'll just disperse with the script on that. It is just approving minutes, so I'll ask Mayor Pro Tem for a motion on item six.
Mayor Paul, I move for the approval of city council minutes, all of which are included in the consent agenda items introduced into the record by the city clerk.
Second.
Does he have to introduce them?
No, motion in a second, and I'll just ask him to read that into the record.
Sure. Item six, approving minutes of the city council, city council special meeting October 3rd, 2022, city council regular meeting October 10th, 2022.
Again, there's a motion in a second on that. Any discussion? Seeing none, please cast your votes. And that passes 10 ayes, one nay, the nay being Springsteen. Okay. We'll keep moving on to item seven, presentation to our clerk. I'll turn that over, and we'll also acknowledge that there is a very thorough presentation on Lakewood Speaks with a lot of background documentation, as well as about an eight-minute video. So thank you for that, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Paul, members of council. Just going to make sure everyone can see my, my big screen. So the purpose of this presentation for tonight is just for initial feedback from city council based on options related to ward boundary changes. Here are the three reasons that require changes to municipal ward boundaries: city annexations, population changes, and changes to county election precincts. So cities typically review both population changes and precinct changes following the completion of a U.S. federal census. The last reason is the driver behind this project, due to recent changes to Jefferson County election precincts that resulted in two areas in Lakewood where county precincts no longer match city ward boundaries. When the city council considers changes to ward boundaries, the following factors must be taken into consideration. Section, Article II, Section 2.7 of the Lakewood Charter requires that the city be divided into five wards, that those wards must have contiguous boundaries, and the wards must be as compact and equal in population as possible. Second, the Lakewood City Council in 1990 passed an ordinance that also added that ward boundary changes may be considered based on the boundaries, nature, and characteristics of the city. So these are the primary and secondary criteria that staff uses when considering ward boundary changes. As I mentioned, part of this project, staff reviewed the city's population changes from the 2020 census, which showed an 8.85% change from 2010 and the 2010 census data for a current population estimate of 155,984 residents. This table shows the current population distribution in each council ward, which stayed very close with a percent difference of 6.77% between the least populated ward and the most populated ward. A 10% deviation or less is a general standard for election redistricting. If not for the recent changes to county precincts, staff would probably not be recommending any changes to the current ward boundaries based on the 6.77% that we see here. The changes to county election precincts was in response to new boundaries for congressional offices and state house and state senate districts. These new districts were implemented by the Colorado Independent Congressional and Legislative Redistricting Commission on behalf of the Colorado General Assembly, who are required to adopt such plans after each U.S. census. The city of Lakewood must now conform to the county precinct boundaries according to the requirements of the state municipal election code, which requires that no county precinct or part of a county precinct be located within more than one municipal ward. As a result of the new county election precincts, there are now two areas in the city of Lakewood where county precincts overlap ward boundaries. The county precincts are identified by 10-digit numbers, just like phone numbers. But for this purpose, staff shortened these 10-digit numbers to refer to them only by their last three digits. And I will summarize the three precincts in order. Precinct 194 is the majority of the area surrounding Bear Creek Lake Park, enclosed within the boundaries of Highway 285, C-470, and Morrison Road, which was entirely within Ward Five. However, this precinct has now, I'm sorry, now includes the Tamarisk subdivision north of 285, which is currently located in Ward Four. The additional area of the Tamarisk subdivision has a population of 670 residents, which brings a total population estimate for this county precinct to 1,974 residents. Precinct 215 was formerly a rectangle-shaped precinct in Ward Five, entirely enclosed within the boundaries of Florida Avenue, Wadsworth Boulevard, Evans Avenue, and Carr Street. Now, the county precinct has shifted into Ward Three by moving north of the Highland Hills neighborhood to now include the Greenwood Park neighborhood and Alameda High School, all the way until Mississippi Avenue. This additional area has a population of 479 residents, which brings a total population estimate for this county precinct to 2,332 residents. County precinct 140 is located west of Kipling and south of Jewel, which includes the Heritage West subdivision and a portion of the Green Mountain Village subdivision. The precinct remained entirely within Ward Five, and still remains entirely within Ward Five, but is only being mentioned because it is switched to Ward Four in the third map option to create a lower population deviation. This precinct has a population of 1,087 residents. The next slides illustrate the three options being proposed by staff. Again, staff explored additional options, but discovered that other options either compromise the criteria of population differences or compactness. In option one, shown here, Ward Five is expanding into the Tamarisk subdivision of precinct 194, and also has Ward Five expanding north of Florida in precinct 215 into the Highland Hills neighborhood to include the Greenwood Park neighborhood and the Alameda School, all the way until Mississippi Avenue. Option one has a population difference just under eight and a half percent and impacts the smallest number of residents, with approximately 1,149 residents shifting into Ward Five. And just quickly, here's a zoomed-in option, zoomed-in view of option one. Under option two, shown here, we also have Ward Five expanding into the Tamarisk subdivision of precinct 194 and placing all of precinct 215 in Ward Three, with Ward Three expanding southward from Highland Hills neighborhood across Florida Avenue to include the section enclosed by Wadsworth, Evans, and Carr Street. Option two has a population difference of 12.4% and impacts approximately 2,523 residents. Here is a zoomed-in option, here is a zoomed-in view of option two. Option three showed here is similar to option one. This third option keeps precinct 194 and precinct 215 in Ward Five, but shifts all of precinct 140 from Ward Five into Ward Four, which includes the Heritage West subdivision and a portion of Green Mountain Village subdivision. Option three has a population difference of 5.65% and impacts approximately 2,236 residents. Here is a zoomed-in view of option three. Again, the purpose of this initial presentation is for staff to receive feedback from city council based on the options provided from staff to address the minor, address minor ward changes. And with that, I am open any questions from council.
All right, Ms. Robb, thank you very much. And this is, this is certainly rare. I think it's clearly every 10 years. So it's been a while since we've had this presented. So the goal is hopefully tonight to get some consensus on one of these. And I think if we can't, then we'll probably need to move them forward and just do a bona fide vote. Counselor Oliver.
Thank you. Jay, how many people are in Tamarisk? Again, you said it, but I didn't write it down.
All right. Let me see.
Can we take the PowerPoint down?
Oh, thanks. Yeah, that, that helps, actually. The, the Tamarisk subdivision has a population of 670 residents.
Okay. And all three options is moving Tamarisk into Ward Four, Five, sorry, Five.
Right.
Yeah, I would be against all three options then. It's obvious, the Tamarisk is surrounded by the Ward Four ones, but next to it is Bear Creek Lake Park. I mean, you would just have this little enclave of Ward Five sitting in somewhere else. And when the Ward Five councillors want to go meet with their constituents out of Ward, out of Tamarisk, they'd have a long way to go. And so that's, the Tamarisk is just kind of fits in there. I've obviously walked that whole area. I mean, it fits right in there with Solterra. It fits right in there with Tiawati Gulf on the other side. And then to the south is a big giant open space. So I'd be against any option moving Tamarisk into Ward Five.
Yes.
Elsor Abel.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Robb, it's my understanding that one of the criteria for our redistricting is that we do not change the boundaries of a ward in such a way that it would unseat an incumbent or prevent, I believe, the next, the same incumbent from running for office again in the same district. Is that correct?
Thank you, counselor, for that question. There's, I didn't see any, anything that prioritized or even mentioned, moving counselors in and out of wards. But neither or none of these options shift any counselors in or out of different wards. There, there are no impacts to which wards city council members reside in.
Right. That's, that's the bottom line, certainly. Thank you.
Thanks for that question.
Elsor Springsteen.
So I have, I'm, I'm a little puzzled about where this is coming from, because the census was two years ago. We're kind of well on our way to another census. I know that, that the state redrew some districts. And you're saying that we're kind of piggybacking that, but one of my questions is, why do we have to? Did you say there's an actual ordinance that requires that? And if there is, what is the purpose of that ordinance? Why do we need to redraw just because the state lines do?
Can we get those two answered, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. A lot of cities are looking, it took a while to process U.S. census data. And my last city, for example, adjusted, evaluated their populations and ward boundaries earlier this spring. So it's, I think a lot of cities are kind of finally processing that data and making adjustments accordingly. And then to your second question, the city follows the Colorado Municipal Election Code, which is in state law. And the sections that I cited, that are also in the staff report, you know, explain why you can't divide county precincts between ward boundaries. And as an election official, it just makes good practice to make sure that your county ballots end up in the precincts that they need to go to. Elections are confusing enough, so I think the state legislature, when they codified that requirement, you know, wanted to, to make sure that, to not overcomplicate or blur election lines between city wards and county precincts.
Okay. I, I guess what's confusing about that is that these seem like very different options. And so you have Ward Three either gaining a great deal of population or losing quite a bit, for instance. And so here's what I know about dealing with, with the city of Lakewood. We're always given three options so that we can pretend like we have a say in something, and we can pretend like council or the public is involved in decision-making. And that always gets me feeling a little bit suspicious as, as it stands. But these combinations of things, why couldn't we as a council have more of a say in how these are put together? Because for instance, we're saying whatever happens in Ward Four and Five is also going to affect Ward Three. And I mean, shouldn't there be more combinations that we should have an option for here? I mean, I think we're smart enough to be able to handle that, even though people think we're not. But also.
Can we, can we address that question, please? Thank you.
Sure. I mentioned this to the counselor over a couple of weeks ago, but you can continue to kind of twist the, the Rubik's Cube with these different precincts and ward boundaries. And these three options focus on the primary and secondary criteria that I listed. We can discuss other options. We can continue to produce maps, but the other options that we came up with, either, you know, rose above the 10% difference threshold that we discussed, or started to compromise compactness of city wards and so forth.
Okay. So another question I have is, so we've seen in the news, for instance, lately, and often redistricting has to do with a lot more than just numbers. It has to do with politics. It has to do with drawing lines in a way that's going to benefit people who want more seats on a certain on a certain legislative body. We've recently seen, for instance, in Los Angeles, where there was a lot of discussion, and there was a scandal about some councillors wanting to redraw lines so that a certain ethnicity would have more seats on their council. And so what concerns me is that those bodies are actually really thinking about the lines and how, how they affect so many different aspects of politics of elections going forward, of representation of different ethnicities. And I'm not hearing any of that here, and that concerns me. I feel like we're just being force fed this, here's what we should do, and we're got to rubber stamp it again. And so I think it's a lot more complex than that. And so that's one of my questions is whether we could get into the complexity of that a little bit more and what other ramifications this might have on the politics of Lakewood and elections going forward. I heard that the way they redrew some of the state lines is allowing some people to serve in the state legislature a lot longer than they would have otherwise. And so that's a question I have. Is this going to, for instance, make it so certain people who, who might have been term limited are going to have a second bite at the apple? So that's my last question.
I can say with confidence that term limits will still exist at the state legislature and with the Lakewood City Council. So no changes here will impact any of that. As far as redrawing boundaries, compromising different ethnic communities, staff tried to find options that really, really impacted as few people as possible. I think one option impacts around 1,200, and the highest option impacts around 2,500 residents. If there are.
Sorry, were ethnic, ethnic boundaries considered? It seems like you said they were.
No, but if council has any concerns, I'm, I'm happy to hear them. But we focused on the primary criteria that's listed, listed in the Lakewood Home Rule Charter, and then what other city councils have, have adopted as secondary criteria.
Counselor Strom.
Thank you. I just wanted to check my understanding of why we're here and what needs to be done. Because it looks to me, if I'm understanding this correctly, there's two things that are going on. We do need to change precinct 194 and 215, because those have fallen out of being in one ward. So in regard, like we, our, our job is not, one of our options is not just to walk away and leave everything as is. We have to change at least two. And then the third one, we can decide upon. Is that correct?
Yep, that's a great summary, Counselor. Thank you. The precinct 140 is only coming into question because, you know, we shifted it in Ward, in option three to balance the population differences, which gets us to a really good population difference of about 5.6%.
Thank you.
Elsor Sharazai.
Yes, thank you. I would just share that I'm not interested in the shifting of precinct 140, because it seems like option three, as you listed it, impacts about 2,500 individuals where, you know, when you look at something like option one, that has a smaller impact on, on humans involved in this. I think you listed 1,200. So that's sort of what I'm looking for. And this also meets the threshold you shared earlier, that the 10% deviation is the general standard. So I feel like option one sort of gets us, it checks up all those boxes. So that would be the one I'm leaning towards.
Okay. So we've heard leaning towards none of them, but I still don't think there's an option not to do anything because of these two splits. And then there's a, there was a plus for the first option. There any other thoughts on some of these options that have been presented? Counselor Franks.
Thanks, Mayor Paul. I certainly understand what was said by option three. I think that certainly it does impact the most number of people. It also, you know, though, keeps, you know, the, the deviation or the differences between them down. And it also avoids a problem where one side of the street is one, one ward, and the other side of the street is a different ward, just knowing that when I was campaigning. So it's not off the table for me personally yet. I certainly want to hear what everyone else thinks. But we certainly know that we, we need to address that we can't have these split precincts. But I certainly want to hear from others if the, the number of impact is seen as being too great by others to where, where they're not, where they would also take it off the table. Or whether, given the fact that it offers some continuity, there might be some appetite for it. So I'm certainly open to hearing more discussion.
Great, thank you. Counselor Stewart.
Yeah, thanks. I think I would be comfortable hearing more about option one or option three. My, I don't want to lose anyone in our ward, which is what would happen in both of those options. But it feels like the deviation for option two is just too, it's too great. It's really significant. And if we're looking and trying to take an equity lens, I also think that the population deviation makes a difference, right? Like, we want to make sure that everyone has equal representation. And one of the best ways to get there is to make sure that our population deviation is, you know, within a threshold that we're, that we're comfortable with. So that just based on our mandate and what we need to do, those two options feel the best for me. Yeah.
Thank you. And certainly, I would say if we don't get to a consensus, you know, these could come forward in an ordinance, and we'll just have to figure that out. And maybe that brings more clarity as we move forward and hear from the community. Counselor May Carrero.
I just want to say that I agree that I'm open to options one and three beyond the number two, for similar reasons as Counselor Stewart.
Great, thank you. Counselor Springsteen.
So first question, I just was wondering if you could, because I'm looking, I'm reviewing here, because I didn't see it in the packet. But I'm trying to find the election code that you're referring to and the requirements of that with regard to precincts. Could you refer me to that? And then secondly, I do have some concerns, because I know that Ward four is sort of considered to be a very active and cutting edge ward. And so I have some concerns that all of these options are some sort of gerrymandering of moving voters and active people out of Ward four. So I just wondered if you could speak to that.
Sure. To the first question, the sections of the municipal election code that I was referencing are 31-4-104 and 3110502. And you know, second, I consider this presentation to be fairly objective, because, you know, staff did it without a lot of considerations, political considerations, I should say. And I was going to make a joke that, you know, I'm so new to the city, this is also a pretty objective breakdown. When you get into discussions about gerrymandering, it typically happens at the state level, at the congressional level. And of course, as you referenced, you know, some of the fights that are going on with the LA City Council. But I still stand by the fact that this is, you know, pretty objective. If there are communities that are being compromised, I'm happy to take that into consideration.
Counselor Jansen.
Thank you. Sorry, I've lost my voice, so I'll try to get as much out as I can. I'm pretty good. I'm really liking option one, because I think it does the least amount of damage or control. I agree with Counselor Over having it being all the way over in Tamarisk. I don't see any other way to change that. I have worked on the maps, the redistricting before, and it is a tough job. This is really easy, I think, compared to what I've done before. So with the population, I really like option one. That's where I'm at. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Vincent.
Yes, I wanted to listen to everybody else's opinion, and I agree that two should be out. Looking at one and three, I have a tendency to go more toward one, but I wanted to hear from the folks who would be, excuse me, impacted by that. So I kind of say the least amount of pain points is, is pretty simple, and I would support that. One or three.
No, thank you. So, so I've got, I've got certainly some momentum towards one. But there's also some folks that I think would like to have further consideration of three. I haven't heard any advocacy for two. And certainly I understand the, the Tamarisk and the split as somebody that's been elected in Ward four, four different times. You know, I certainly understand, and I've spent a lot of time in these neighborhoods, as well as Heritage West, which has a unique representation for Ward five, and has had a lot of activity in Ward five. So I think whenever we do these, there's never a silver bullet, but it's trying to come to the best compromise that we can. One for me is, is something that does appeal, because it's the least amount of change. But I, I think it might be worth having more feedback on one and three. And so I would just do a test right now on that as far as moving those two forward at this point. Okay, I'm not getting a lot of objections to that. So, Mr. Robb, if that was the case, is that doable as far as moving forward with a potential ordinance and public hearing process for those two recommendations?
Yeah, we'll work on that and maybe put this back to council to get some strong feelings either back towards option one or option three.
So is there, do we have a timeframe that, that needs to, I mean, I know we have an election next year. So sooner the better, so folks know and can be prepared.
I think we could put both options forward, and then council can vote on it that night. We'll just essentially draft both of them up, and then one will have to be voted in favor. But you are right that we, we do need to get moving on.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. So with that said, if we move forward with one and three, we can move to the next phase of this process. Okay, all right. Thank you. Mr. Robb, hey, great job. Nice presentation tonight and on Lakewood Speaks as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, great discussion and appreciate the, the input and questions. Okay, will the clerk please read item eight into the record? We'll give you a second.
Yeah, thanks. I almost, you're fine. Just left the meeting.
Take your time.
Item eight, Resolution 2022-63, approving the designation and creation of the Belmar Entertainment District.
Okay, I'll now open the public hearing on Resolution 2022-63. Sounds like Mr. Parker will provide a short presentation. And there he is, Mr. Parker. Good evening.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. Yeah, just a very short presentation to remind everyone where this sits right now. This presentation is for the February sixth. Excuse me, apparently I have some audio on this. So as you recall, earlier in the year, city council approved the ability for the city to create entertainment districts. These can be districts up to 100 acres and allow the creation of common consumption areas. Belmar has submitted such a proposal. It's outlined on the screen right here, so that you can see the proposed area to be considered an entertainment district. If council approves that set in entertainment district, Belmar would be able to excuse me on audio. I apologize for that.
Yeah, we're, we're getting kind of an echo on that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll stick to this slide, since it appears to be one without audio. But basically, once, once Belmar submits their, or once council approves Belmar proposal, Belmar would be able to form a promotion association and apply for a common consumption area within the Belmar Entertainment District. Leave it there.
Okay. And as further history, we did approve the licensing process. And so this is actually the first application to start the process that council laid out. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
All right. So I'll open public comment on this. I'll note that there is one public comment on Lakewood Speaks in favor from Mr. Quinn and the Alameda Connects Business Improvement District. Anybody else wish to speak on this item? Please go ahead and raise your hand with a star nine to request to speak. Okay, I will close that, and I'll ask for a motion that we can go into council questions or comments.
Mayor Paul, I move for the adoption of Resolution 2022-63.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? I know Counselor Stewart, you are very excited for this, so seeing no more. There is a hand up. Counselor Oliver.
Yeah, this boundary is a lot bigger than what we were looking at previously for the Belmar. What happened there? I mean, we were looking at something, and in fact, you just showed it in the presentation, just the plaza across from the Century Theaters. And now we're looking at how many square blocks? I mean, we're, we're looking at something including an awful lot of parking lots, but also Whole Foods, Target, Dick's. I mean, everything imaginable. It just looks huge right now. And so where did we go from a tiny little thing around the plaza to this big thing?
So I should distinguish between the entertainment district as a whole, which includes the business area, and the later to be created common consumption area. So the common consumption area is a subset of a larger entertainment district. That's where, you know, common consumption of food and alcohol can take place and would likely be the plaza or the areas surrounding the plaza. Would not be this entire area of Belmar. But this, this would be the business district that would have be, the businesses in this district would be able to be members of the promotional association that controls the common consumption area. Is that a little clearer?
Well, yeah, but do they have to be? Does all the businesses are then they are, they're all required to pay dues or something like that? And do, and if, yeah, well, that's, let's start with that question.
No, so, so the, you know, the Belmar ownership is, can reach out to the businesses within this entertainment district to form that promotional association. There's no requirement that they participate.
Okay, so I do understand the difference between the entertainment district and comments, common consumption area. Does one have to preclude the other? In other words, when they ask for a common consumption area, do they have to have it already be an entertainment district?
Yes, exactly. That's exactly right. Common consumption areas are only permissible within a entertainment district created by the city council.
Right. I still don't see why. Right. I still don't see why it needs to be so huge. Uh, you know, all the businesses going on there. Um, you know, from Whole Foods to Target, it's like, well, guess what? Target's in an entertainment district. So there's going to be a band outside there or something. That's like, well, it looks like massive overkill. So, yeah, I'm not, I don't, I don't understand why it has to be so big. I mean, you know, why don't you just make it all Lakewood? Um, if, you know, it just looks like overkill to me.
And I can certainly mention that, that there are representatives from Belmar in the attendee list if you have specific questions for them.
Counselor Strom?
Yeah, point, uh, again, a point of clarification, clearly, that's what I'm doing tonight. Um, so kind of piggybacking on that question, um, does that, would that mean, okay, so for example, like Whole Foods is not by the, um, courtyard, the plaza. So we're not going to have some of the entertainment functions necessarily at Whole Foods, but Whole Foods is contributing to maybe events that are being had at the plaza. I guess I'm trying to understand how, kind of to Counselor Over's point, like it's a really huge scope in terms of businesses that are involved. But I think what we're hearing though is the actual activity is going to be contained within probably the plaza or something aware about. Can we get some clarity on like for those businesses that are further away? Ted's might be an example. What exactly role might they play within the entertainment district? Since they're not right on, next door to it.
So you're absolutely right. So we're talking about a smaller area of activity in terms of the common consumption area. But any business within this entertainment district would be eligible to be part of the association, right? That, that applies for and can control that common consumption area and, and ha- has control over that, the activities there.
Well, and Mr. Parker, and, and, you know, you may not be the right person since the applicant, you know, really this is what they've asked for. And their concerted goal is to help boost Belmar and, and to bring everybody, you know, in, in some way, shape or form, moving them forward. And what I had understood also is this would allow that maybe the entertainment district isn't, or the, uh, consumption area isn't always just the plaza, that there could be other areas as they look at reconfiguring and look at the future build out of Belmar. And so potentially that could be why you have the larger section and then individual common consumptions that could be applied for. And again, this is at the request of the property owners. Is that accurate?
That's accurate.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Okay, we have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes. And that passes, uh, ten ayes, one nay, the nay being Counselor Olver. Okay, general business. I have one item under general business just to signal out to council. Um, I want to thank Mayor Pro Tem Vincent and Counselor Franks as they had been the, the two folks that helped facilitate last year's retreat. And as we are starting to look at twenty twenty-three's retreat, their idea was to, um, look for somebody who is a seasoned veteran and maybe one of our newer folks to be that group to help plan going forward with all of you. And that suggestion was Counselors, uh, Abel and Stewart. And so they have accepted that challenge to reach out and start to work on that. But what we will do, I think, on November seventh, which is a virtual study session. But at the end of that, what I'd like to do is have everybody bring their calendars and, uh, we will all work together on those calendars to pick a date together. So I wanted to throw that out. Anything else under general business? Okay, we'll go into counselor reports. Is there a ward that would like to go first? So all right, oh, there, Counselor Jansen, go ahead. Thank you.
Sorry. So, sorry, my voice is really bad. So I'm, I'm still having my, uh, Ward five meeting on November fifth, um, nine thirty to ten. Uh, Mr. Smith is going to be there, uh, talking about economic development. And I'm sorry, I really can't talk anymore. So, but thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We hope you feel better.
I feel fine. I just sound cool.
Okay. Some hot tea. Um, where are we at? Counselor Strom?
No report today.
Ward four?
No report.
Okay, no report. Ward three?
I know. Uh, I don't have any report other than Ward three is delighted to be the home of Lakewood's first entertainment district.
Congrats.
Um, yeah, I just, uh, wanted to report on some events that have occurred over the past, uh, couple of weeks. Um, regarding, uh, Kishama Sawant, who is a city councillor in Seattle, um, uh, who I intend to be working with on the parallels that I have seen, uh, between what happened to her and what happened to me here in Lakewood. She's a, she's an outspoken councillor, woman of color, uh, who has, who has, uh, been very outspoken about questions, uh, questioning the establishment and big money interests and police accountability in her city. Over this past couple of weeks, uh, her residence has been targeted, uh, by people throwing bags of feces at her home on several occasions, biohazardous waste, uh, into her yard, which, uh, she believes is politically motivated. And I, I just wanted to bring this up because what strikes me is the parallels to what happened to me earlier this year with regard to my house being vandalized, broken into flooded, uh, a dead rabbit left under my car on one occasion, a death threat, uh, sent to me, uh, which also politically motivated. And another parallel though, is the lack of support that, uh, Counselor Sawant received from her city and police department. And she has been very vocal about that, uh, because it could turn into more serious and dangerous harassment. Um, in fact, in my city, not only has most of my council said nothing to support me on this, uh, but in one public meeting, the mayor pretty much said I deserved it. So, um, I just wanted to bring this to the city's attention. I know everybody's glazing over, right? Because this, this is just me complaining about this death threat to my family and myself yet again, that none of you seem to be concerned about. Well, a couple of you are concerned about. I'm not going to say none of you are. A couple of you have spoken up for me. Uh, I have supported me, uh, specifically Counselor Over, Over, Counselor Abel, um, and Counselor Jansen. Um, so I hope this doesn't happen to any of the rest of you. But I just wanted to make note of that because this is not just a problem in Lakewood. It's a problem across our nation and we should be supporting each other. So it doesn't happen to others. Um, and I wanted to say that's wonderful that, uh, Counselor Abel is going to, uh, be involved in setting up our mid-year retreat because maybe I'll get to participate this time. It's not that hard to allow a, uh, single mom's schedule to be considered in something like that. Thanks.
Ward two?
I didn't know. Ms. Mayak, or did you want to go and then I'll go?
Um, I do not have a report at this time.
Okay. Um, I just, I just want to thank the city of Lakewood. We had a Two Creeks neighborhood organization meeting, um, that was open to everyone. And we had multiple people from the police department. Uh, Mayor Paul was there. I was there. We had representatives from RTD. I don't think I forgot. Oh, and from, uh, Mul Home School, which is slated for closure. And it could have been a meeting that could have become very heated. But I'd like to thank the members of the community because they asked very pointed questions, but with a lot of respect. And we got some good clarifications from RTD as well as the police department. And we even had, I don't know what you call an agent who's not a full agent yet, but Agent Torres was there and he did not quit after the meeting. So we were grateful for that. We were wondering. And then also two forty west had their fundraiser and I think everybody came out for that. I think Mayor Paul was there and I was there and there was many, many people. So it was a good fundraiser. And I think that's it. Thanks.
Thanks, Mayor Pro Tem. Ward one?
No report, Mayor.
Thanks. I just had two things. So, uh, again, tomorrow would mark, uh, six weeks since Masahmini was murdered. Um, and so as a first generation Iranian American, I want to share that two hundred and forty-four people have been killed and twelve thousand five hundred have been detained, including a twelve and a fourteen year old. And so I mentioned those ages because it's important to note that the, this protest and this revolution is on the backs of young people. And I want to take my privilege here to just share that I stand in solidarity with that. The other piece that I'd like to just give an update on is there's been a lot of information shared about a partnership with the city of Lakewood and Mile High Youth Corps. So it's an opportunity for Lakewood residents who are income qualifying to receive energy and water saving measures in their homes. On average, this saves households about two hundred and fifty dollars on their utility bills. And so for, um, those who track closely what council is voting on, this is a partnership that we voted on earlier in the year to help support, um, saving money in our Lakewood residents' homes. So you can find out more about this at milehighyouthcorps.org if you're interested in learning if you qualify. And that's it for me.
Great. Thank you. Uh, so I would just mention our schedule coming up. We are off for Halloween, so wish everybody, uh, happy Halloween and be careful out there with the kiddos running around. And then we'll be back virtually on November seventh for a study session. That'll be with the State Demographer, which will be a fantastic presentation. If you recall, that was one of the study sessions mentioned at our annual planning retreat and then state of the municipal courts. And then we'll be doing an in-person meeting on November fourteenth, a special meeting and touring and meeting with St. Anthony Hospital. So that'll bring us out for the next couple of weeks. Um, Mr. Goldstein, do you have anything this evening?
Nope.
Okay, we appreciate everybody's time and we're going to call it at seven fifty-nine PM. Hope you all have a wonderful couple of weeks. Take good care.